This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, thank you. He's not here.
Mayor Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Trivio.
Here.
Commissioner Wyatt. Commissioner Gandy.
Here.
Commissioner Bolt.
Here.
Sure. Everybody ready to pray with me? Lord God, we just thank you for this day. Lord God, we just thank you for the glorious rain that you blessed our community with. Lord God, we just thank you for every blessing that you give us. Lord God, as we conduct the city's business tonight, I just pray for us as a commission that we would do your will. That we would not harm our fellow citizens in any burdensome task or anything like that. Lord God, I just pray that you would lead in God our thoughts that we would go in a direction that would be beneficial to our community. And God, I just thank you for our staff. I thank you for each one of our employees. I thank you for our citizens and the hard work and volunteerism that they put into our community. Lord God, I just thank you for this land that you've given us. Though it is dry and dusty most days, the rain makes it a beautiful place. We're gonna thank you for that. Lord God, we love you and we praise you. Jesus Christ, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect relationship among the united cultures.
For those who are of a monthly intent.
Prayer I like most in the food and drink business.
I have most in terms. As submitted, any discussion? Any discussion? Jay Lane?
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt.
Yes.
Commissioner Wyatt. Commissioner Trivio.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead. You're going to make a long time approval of consideration of ministers number 26. Second?
I was going to say for the adoption of the minutes as written, any corrections for discussion? Do not.
Commissioner Trivio.
Yes.
Commissioner Wyatt. Yes. Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberts.
Yep. All right. Spring started. Commissioner Stafford. The desk, you get to start off.
Okay. Well, good evening, commissioners and mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know that I spoke with Ed Lin today about EDC, and we are gonna go and open a bank account for them. We'll be doing that probably in the next couple of weeks. And I spoke to Ed as well today, and he did come to revise the allocation sheet that we've been using for the GRT. He said it's a little confusing and stuff, and he's gonna revise it. It would be a little easier and a little easier to understand and stuff, so that's about all I have to.
Thank you.
Chrissy, have we worked on finding a asset, someone to contract out?
We've spoke about it and are in the process of trying to find out who we can get and all that. And I do know we can get some help.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chief.
I'd call up code enforcement officer Christina. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. City Manager. City Manager Martinez asked me to give all of you an update on Operation Cleanup, which was started in April of this year. The main goals of Operation Cleanup are public safety and quality of life. Operation Cleanup targets properties within the city which have been abandoned and/or burned down. Typically, a property falls into neglect and decline when there is an absentee landlord or the property has had a fire and there was no property insurance on it. As the abandoned property continues to fall into decline, contracts vandalism, theft, arson, drug use, prostitution, and criminal activity. We have found that each project is a unique situation. We strive to work in the spirit of cooperation with the property owner in assisting them to clean up their lot. Today, we have not had to place a lien on any property. Often, the property owner wants to clean up the location themselves, but does not have the means to pay for the debris disposal. Some projects are further complicated by the presence of asbestos. The primary cost associated with Operation Cleanup are low on containers used for disposal. They're contracted through waste management and cost $475 each, and they're swapped out sometimes 10 or 20 times on any given job. In the bigger projects, the city has saved the cost of hiring a contractor by using our own street department to demolish the structures. Starting funds for Operation Cleanup were raised using the proceeds from our city vehicle auction. Of the initial $82,000 raised, we have already spent approximately $40,000 five months into the project. We're currently working on approximately one dozen properties throughout the city, seven properties completed and appeared. Up note, Operation Cleanup Fund does not come out of the city's general fund. It is a separate and specific line item which I monitor. As I said initially, the overarching concept of Operation Cleanup is public safety and quality of life. The direct and immediate benefits of this program have been community, community purification, product reduction, and increased property values to benefit all citizens. And then we're gonna take a look at some of the properties that we've completed so far. So this project, we got a lot of calls on. It was directly across the street from the school on Third Street. It had fallen into disuse, had a fire, a lot of drug use in there, a lot of people, and it was in evil, it's right across the street. So the owner actually tore it down himself, and all we had to do on this property was provide 12 tent blocks. Cars in the backyard. There's debris all throughout the property. We have someone living on the other side very close to him who routinely calls the city manager. You can see there from the fire. And that's what it looks like today. It took about two months to finish this. The second one is just directly north of that, still on Third Street, also burnt down. It had also been used by homeless people, migrants, those drug users, things like that, yeah, across the street from the school. And that's what it looks like today. And the lots are already been resold for redevelopment. Project number three, we all know is on South Main here. It's the old real estate company. This was complicated by the fact that there was asbestos in this property. So we did have to hire a private contractor. It was a little expensive, but we felt it had already been partially demolished, and the asbestos was flowing all around. It's right there on Main Street. So City Manager approved these asbestos spots, and now it's been completely cleaned up. And that's what it looks like today. And she's also been redeveloping the property. Two of the most notorious projects we've worked on are in Commissioner Bolt's neighborhood. This was actually a brick home which had burned down. It had been abandoned for a long time. You can see the debris and the garbage would flow down the alley. I think sometimes into your yard, Commissioner. A lot of drug activity, a lot of problems. Neighbors have been complaining about this in the recent property for over a decade. And you can see it's just people were literally kicking through the garbage in like a third world country. That's the alley going east. And that's where the inside of the house looked at. It was not secure, but people were staying in there. And this one was. Property directly to the south of that, our department's been called to this property hundreds of times in the past. They gave it pretty much every prime need to stay though. It took a moment to get. We negotiated with the owner, who lives out of state. And you can see all the garbage. It's a big property. It's two lots, and it was just destroyed inside. That's what it was like. And the neighborhood, the neighbors were very, very appreciative of what we did for them in these two lots right here. There was a house across the street that was on Marv three years, perfectly fine house, but because that was across the street, they couldn't sell it. So Christina's gonna talk a little bit about commercial properties, Commissioner Bolt, Commissioner Gandy. Talked about wanting to extend our program into maybe more District One and progress in some of these commercial properties, which are a little different, available to residents. You know.
So I have been getting a lot of questions of when are we gonna start on the commercial properties, and that is hopefully this week. It is a lot more different dealing with the community, the commercial properties than it is the residential. The residential, I've been working with Crystal, who does the permits and stuff for these people. With it being a residential, we don't make them if the homeowner is doing a demo. We don't make them check it for asbestos if they're doing it themselves. If we, the city, or contractor is doing it, then they have to. Unfortunately, with the commercial buildings, it has to be done. There has to be an asbestos check done, and then that's when it starts. That's when it gets pretty pricey. Our last asbestos check that we had a contractor do was over $22,000. And thanks to Crystal, Ms. Crystal Wall and Laura Brock, Christina Silverman, they have been helping us to get asbestos checks until I can get certified to do those in November. I am starting tomorrow. I'm going through and nailing for tall weeds. The chipped paint has to be fixed. There is a couple of them that live over there on corner Central in the alleyway where the roof is falling in. I know Ms. Laura Brock and Crystal Wall have been working on that property for years. I have a very thick, thick file on that, and they have just been getting shut down. So I'm gonna have to get Patrick involved in on that one. The property owner's not wanting to maintain it, or they said it's actually really dangerous for anybody that directs in that alley. There's some pipes coming out and debris falling off of it.
So we appreciate your patience, but this is Livingston Code Enforcement right here. This is it. So it's gonna take a little while. But we'd be happy to stand for any questions that the commission might have.
I don't have many questions, but I can't tell you. Like you said, neighbors have come up and said how happy they are in my neighborhood, but in other neighborhoods where you've done other work, cleanups, that I've known people, they've expressed also the thankfulness of having the properties not there anymore.
Right.
Because like you said, it was just a hazard.
When we tore down that two-story building on your corner, I got four inquiries within a couple of days about where, where, who do I have to speak to to buy that property?
Right. I have also.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I said I can't, don't have any questions, but can't thank you enough, not just from me, but from the neighborhoods. We appreciate it very much.
The only other thing to add is that anyone who's interested in attending our active shooter response training, you can show up this Saturday at the high school at 4:00 or 4:30. We'll only keep you for an hour or two. That's just a scenario training. You don't have to stay all day for the classroom stuff. That's where the action's gonna happen, around 4:30 on Saturday. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, so our third quarter numbers for the year for July, August, and September, we had 781 EMS calls, 123 facility transfers, 48 airport runs, 268 DOAs canceled or refusals, 32 title calls, and 63 fire calls. We are doing Fire Safety Month, of course, this October, so we will be taking trucks to the schools and stuff. If you see them there throughout the days, it's nothing going on. We're just showing the kids the trucks. We'll be going to Lee Elementary tomorrow morning. We'll be doing our sirens testing on Wednesday at 10:00 in the morning. So we're looking at the weather in two days. It's, I've already sent it to the radio. I let all the senior citizen centers know. The hospital knows. The schools know. So it's been sent to pretty much everybody. It's on our Facebook page. Trying to get it out to everyone so that they know, right now, the weather's looking like it's gonna cooperate with us. We're supposed to be clear, so let's cross our fingers. Like Chief Brandon said, we're gonna be participating with them in the active shooter training on Saturday. We'll be there Saturday afternoon. Most of the problems we've had with the CRI, with the collections, most of those have been taken care of the problems that we were having. Now, I believe it's just most of the accounts that they were collecting on, once they're recoverable. And then it is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so if you see any Livingston Fire Department personnel, we will be wearing the black shirts with pink ribbons, pink on the back. And we are gonna be, if anybody's interested in purchasing those, we are selling them for $20 apiece. That pays for the shirt, the printing, and we get a little bit extra in any of the extra pursuits that we give. We're gonna donate to Light of Lee County, which is a nonprofit organization that contributes to the breast cancer patients at the Cancer Center. So if y'all are interested, we are selling the shirts. Just get ahold of the fire department. We have order forms. I've got it stacked here if anybody wants any. The, you have to pay when you order the shirt. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Yes. The last meeting you brought up as far as with the aerial truck, we were gonna get information on that.
So unfortunately, we're stuck with that truck. The way the loan was done, the way it was set up, we cannot sell the truck, and we cannot pay the loan off early. And that truck does not pay off, if I'm correct, till 2032, 2033, right up there. So we are stuck with that truck. However, we are.
I'm not taking no for an answer.
We are working and doing, we're still working on it and also still trying to get a new engine to replace our ancient fleet. So we haven't given up yet. We're still working on it, but as of right now, that's where we are on that truck.
On the sirens testing, I know, I realize the first one has been an ordeal to get it this month.
If we get to it on Wednesday and get it done, are we gonna do it on a regular basis? I would like to do this pretty much quarterly, at least quarterly. So that at least we don't have to do quite as much notification. Yes, sir. So my, I have one of my ship, the Tyche's, he is in charge of. Every month, he goes to the siren boxes. He lives out. He'll make sure they're still charging, make sure the trip charges are good, batteries are still good. So that gets done month. However, we need to make sure that the P A system is working correctly and all that. That's why we're doing this. And like I said, if we, if it all works good, we'll see what's, what doesn't work. We'll get it worked on. We'll get it tested as many times as we have to until we get it done, and then at that point, I want to do the quarter.
Any questions? All right. Thanks, sir. Mr. Bolt?
Yes, I do have a question for each. How are we along on your fence?
We're doing great. They put the gates and the tracks today with the motors. And we're timing it in conjunction with repaving and restriping apartment lots. That's part of the project. So that guy did a great job on the fence. We just need the pedestrian doors, and we'll be done.
Oh, did I figure?
In a couple of weeks. It's, it's, the fence is 95% gone, so.
I see it was coming along pretty good.
Just have to coordinate with the mayors and son in terms of paving.
Okay, thank you. As far as myself. Eat, drink.
A lot.
Stop local, buy local. Again, the rebuild that we do, I know I say it, I'm a broken record on it, but it's just the way I feel. We have to help out our community, our businesses, our restaurants. Any, any part that we can help out in the community here, we need to. Getting out there and volunteering, helping out for different things. That's all part of what makes a community strong. I just hope that we keep moving forward. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Question for you. Mr. again?
I don't have anything to say.
Daylin?
Yes, sir. Just a reminder of the work session next Tuesday at 5:30.
Yes. It'll be a special meet.
Yes, work session.
Yes, true. Any other? Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, all I have to present tonight is the resolution 2022 of Madison Foundation Grants. And I noticed that is an action item, so I'll stand by any questions that the mayor or the commission have.
Yes, you know, how are we coming along with Zoe? You know, you said you were gonna look into it and see what's, we're moving forward with Zoe.
Talking about the commercial operation cleanup, is that?
No, no, no. As far as the businesses and the Avenue D and. Forefronts of that.
Right, so, so the first step will be, I know Christina mentioned she's gonna meet with the businesses to make sure that the outside facilities are cleaned up. So that will be the first step. Then from there, we'll meet with specific business owners to make sure that if we identify, for example, broken windows or junk vehicles in the backyard and so forth, we'll meet with those business owners and address each issue. And I understand that we're aware of the weed situation with Frontier Auto, and we're reaching out to the owner who lives out of state. That property is in litigation right now, but it's really gone. It looks bad. So we're, we're on that. So the first step will be outside. Once she does her inspections, then we'll focus on specific business owners and we'll address those issues. Because I know there is one business that broke windows, and we need to address that. Because if it continues, then it just, the theory, Chief, is that if you have a broken window, if you want it. The broken window theory of criminology, yeah, basically says if you let a property, you know, it starts with a broken window, then there's graffiti, then there's weeds, and then you pull some around and see that you're just letting a property go, it needs to force your describe, and that's proven fact. So it's not just aesthetic appeal. It's kind of things you need to decline, evolve.
And that's why I mentioned.
Even in commercial. Yes. And so what we plan to do is we will start identifying those specific business owners, and then we'll, we'll put a report together. And then we definitely will set a meeting with both Commissioner Bolt and Gandy, maybe on the sound of it, we can. And with those, with commercial properties rather than residential, we're gonna be able to less forgive them. We will look at putting liens on their property for what we spent, because we feel that, you know, the majority of probably at the funds to clean up their properties.
And Chief, I was gonna bring it up. I thought I would back off of it until later, but we probably need to discuss how we're going to look at that. Because unfortunately, if, let's just say you have one that's been nice for a long time, and you've got another one that has become that. And if that, if the new location says, hey, I'm willing for you in Operation Cleanup to knock it down and clear it off, Harvey, which we know will create a, is more attractive and will probably attract someone to buy it. We're gonna have to come up with some guidelines there, because otherwise, we're gonna do all the work, which the city gets a much better opportunity out of than hopefully it productive. And in the long run, we will, we will benefit, but we're gonna have to probably look at some fair opportunities.
To be, because we also don't have unlimited funds.
Exactly. So, you know, we appreciate what's going on, and I just think that we're gonna, that it's gonna be found something in the future. To decide whether we put a lien, do it. At this point, I, again, I commend your efforts in code enforcement. I didn't want to bring that. I do not want to be a cloud over it or whatever, but that's just a fact.
Yeah, and we're learning as we go along. Every situation is different, so we'll always try to work with property first. We don't want to bust someone's extra money. Thank you. Ms. Bolt?
I really didn't have anything to report. Did you have any questions for me? I'm working on the map grant. I had a group started doing the geo testing for, the map grant was the design of Jackson from ninth to 17th. It's just a design base. I am going to reach out this week to the other two grant CES contractors to start on the mill and bill and the slurry road projects that we were granted those applications. Still have not heard back if we receive the hardship funding or not, but I should know something after the September meeting, which is the 20th of November 10. I know Main Street asked me to mention to the public about the not vacant shindee on the 14th from 6:00 to 10:00 in, at 205 North Main. And they will also have the tours through time at the Lee County Museum on Saturday the 15th. And that's an all-day event at the museum. There'll be camper hug, chuck wagon, movies, there's gonna be Ringo. And they'll have Bear Garden and Live Entertainment. They just asked me to let everybody know, come out, please, and see what the activities offer and see what the, you know, their goal is, is to try to provide businesses to do these type of things so we can get these GRTs for these events. Any questions?
I will repeat the questions that I get.
Okay.
When is commercial, I mean, not commercial, when are they going to be done on the Denver City Highway? And I'm like.
Avenue D?
Avenue D, yeah.
Until around.
It's just a steady barrage.
Yes, oh, yeah. I get them all the time.
I assure you. All right.
All right. Patrick?
Mayor, questioners don't have anything new?
Questions?
Oh, God, we will be putting out the R S P for the marketing this week. Thursday it will be published.
I have nothing. Can I bring this to our public comment time? I encourage if you have something you would like to bring to the commission, this is your time. Just brush the people's podium. Give us your name, and then see, try to keep it three minutes. All right.
Yes, sir. I have a question. I have a neighbor that's getting a little bit behind me. And I know questions, though, and I told her it probably wouldn't be possible, but she knows that. I've done information meetings and stuff. She would like to know if you could move the siren. Because.
Do you want me to give the answer?
No, you shouldn't want it one law. And the siren is on her property. And I told her, I said, you should have thought about this before, before you bought the property. And I'm not gonna be okay about it. If you want, I said, we can put it in the back of my house. I said, but honestly, the moving, I said, it's, I'm not gonna say it's not impossible. I said, I just don't think you're gonna have.
So I think that's, if that's an easement right there.
I was gonna say, I don't think it's on her property.
It's an easement, yes, yes. It's on the easement. I tried to explain that, that, you know, we have to have an easement, and I think the city has 15 feet there and 10 feet. I said, on the other side, and I said, that's why the fold is. She said, she says, I'm not that one. I said, they probably won't. I said, I'll bring it up. I said, but the chances of getting moved is like we're gonna have a shame in that.
Yeah, there you go. Maybe a little closer to it, but not.
But, you know, I figured.
Because it was just a lock right now. I know, I know where you live. Because it was just a lot right now. I know, I know where you live, and it was just a lot.
Yes.
And that's, most people would say that, why it was still just a lot.
Thanks.
And I appreciate her investing in her community, but you kind of gotta go in that way.
I just, I just wondered. I understand, the city commission know that I did bring it up. But the actual person, it's her, it's her, and it's so. I appreciate it.
You just tell her no, no.
Make sure she knows her fence can't go to the curb.
Yes, I told her.
Crystal will inform.
The really rough part about that is maybe it's going to just be outside impairment, because her property line does actually go off to the the way that's plotted out right there. The easement is for just that little corner of the, where the tire is.
You still have a fifteen foot off of your property.
Go the middle of the road back. Yeah, and it's, well, it's actually been surveyed, and it's, the property lines are on the back of the curve on Eighth Street side. Now, on the bend here inside, they are off the road, just like normal areas, but there is a weird jog there in Eighth Street, just like there is in Sixth and Fourth off of Jackson down there, where the property lines are just not straight in the center of roads. And the easements weren't giving the exact half and half measurements there. So it's, it's a little weird in that area. But I will keep referring that on the curve, because yeah, it's a side impairment.
I was gonna mention fifteen foot off the property line. It'll, it'll be off, no matter what, she has to be off.
Well, the house has to be off of fifteen foot, but bench, you're allowed to build on the property line.
Even on a corner?
Well, that's where I can, I can say I can keep some of it off of there for the side.
Side impairment, yeah.
Yes.
All right, anyone else? We're moving on. All right. Made this the non-action items. Patrick Martinez? Take the lead on there.
Mr. Mayor members of the commission, in your packet, you should have a list of department goals and objectives. And at this time, if there was anything that we need to add, we can definitely do it now. Give you a moment to look at that document. Any? Any questions or comments? Nothing, right?
For the public information, this is this is the document that we're gonna keep on, and it'll be a continuance. So if there is something that you would like to be on, concerned, then if you will, we'll bring it up, Jaylen, and she will present it to us to be put off. And then that, it's been action items.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash one oh seven, approval of block party, street closure permit for Hospital, Comprecory, twenty-first anniversary party.
We have a motion, a second for this resolution, any discussion? Any other thing you can say?
Yeah, so she, she couldn't make it today, but Ms. Claire Hospital, the one that opened in this request for this street closure. It's, it's only gonna be a, a little bit of a portion on Avenue Line, and they already talked to the healthcare facility across the street from them. And as long as they keep the entrance open for emergency services, then they are good with it. The letter from, I don't know what it's called, healthcare, insurance, healthcare? The order from them is in the packet of her apartment. It's, it's gonna be on the on the twenty-second. And I haven't received any any comments from any of the department heads, street, fire, police have all been on it, so. Because it's just a little portion of the whole block we blocked off. And we have done it in the past, we just needed to have them just follow.
Any question? Or a comment?
Oh, yes. So they've got, according to that, the whole front of the Lovington Healthcare blocked off. We pick up patients where that, you see that truck parked on the street there? Where that yellow is, that's where my ambulance is parked when we pick up patients. We, we can't access it off of the, off the east side.
Did you not put it back there?
I did. I approved it, but I wanted to.
Do you not only need to talk to Claire, she couldn't make it?
Yeah. If we could go just this side of the, where the yellow is of the healthcare right there, the corner of the parking lot, at that point, that would be.
It shuts to block it off for jumpers, for the kids, and a boot truck, and.
That's what I said, if we could block it off on that side, pretty much the corner of their parking lot, that way we'll be fine, because my, my investors can access that off of Avenue Line. I, that was the only question.
You probably just need to call Claire and, Claire and talk to the healthcare, and they had told her that they would keep that side entrance free off. That if you came through Avenue Odd there at the end of that building, they say keep it clear.
That goes into the kitchen.
No, it's gonna be half of it, that's what I give. It's gonna be half of the street, so the street that y'all need to go in and out, y'all hear that, that access is like half of the street, basically.
Okay, pretty much where I was looking.
Yes, but it's still gonna be closed, like on the other path.
I just saw where you had it blocked off. And that was not only.
Neighbor? All right. Roll by others.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Truglio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Motion on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash one oh eight, approval of animal shelter lease agreement to include vet services.
I'm looking at the second for the two world this resolution.
And the mayor, commissioners, a couple of months ago, Laura's here also, a couple of months ago, we had a meeting, was, uh, myself, city manager, Commissioner White, mayor, and the doctor, and we discussed a little bit about the current agreement that we have. There were a couple of things that we were gonna do after that. My understanding is what's happened since is Laura did go and negotiate the terms with the veterinarian to put this together. And so I looked through there, I can't say, you know, as far as what was negotiated, but as far as, the only thing that really piqued my attention is just in, I have number three, put dollar signs in front of twelve thousand and one thousand. I'm not sure on the term, we have a term of October, then we need a renewal, six month renewal, but other than that, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to say without negotiating it, but Laura is here, and I guess would be available for questions, but other than that, there's not anything I saw that would be problematic for causing city issues.
Thank you. I did, Mr. Members of the commission, I did review the agreement, and it looks fine, I think we should move forward. And Patrick did look at it, and like he mentioned, there's just a few things that need to be changed, but my recommendation is to approve and move forward.
Do we need to make an amendment for the, the changes?
But I think that probably more like it.
My grammar, yeah.
Yeah, okay, just making sure basically.
All right, yeah, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Truglio?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash one oh nine, approval of three hundred ninety thousand dollar grant from the Maddox Foundation for installing fiber optic cable through Central Lovington.
We have motion, second one. Patrick Martinez? Give us a little info on that.
Mr. Mayor members of the commission, last month I met with Mr. David Reed on this project. And he indicated to me that the foundation had money available to continue the expansion of broadband within the city of Lovington. If you look at the map, I met with the CEO of Maddox, I mean, legal. And if you look at this map here, this part of the city already has broadband. This area in yellow green is will be the project, that will be phase one. And so we have a grant of three hundred ninety thousand dollars for that section. Now, phase one, again, would be this area. And then phase two would be the rest of this area here. Now, keep in mind, part of this is city and part is county, so we would have to negotiate with the, with the county, work with the Maddox Foundation for phase two. So our goal is to have to complete our, our city broadband. And, and I just, for the record, if anyone can explain to me how important broadband is to community, is that? Anybody have an idea? Because I know there's going to be questions about why broadband, what is broadband, can anybody tell me why is this important to our community? Anyone?
So I don't lose phone service going through somewhere, looking at some, I have no idea. Well, the fiber optic is really easy upgrade. Several years ago, I believe it was TDS, it's been a while. Anyway, completed the original area that you stated had the higher speed. My question in all of this is, if the city pays for the installation of fiber optic, then how are we going to choose which provider is going to be allowed to use that or provide, you know, with it's kind of like, if we put telephone lines in the old days across the, around the city, then we, we have to choose who that provider is.
Correct, and so if the city, if the mayor commission is approved tonight, then we will, on Monday, on tomorrow, it's tomorrow, two days, we'll submit an RP. And it'll be published for ten days, and that'll allow organizations to, to, to submit their bid. Now, once, within days, we'll advertise, and then we will sit a committee, and we'll use a point system. From there, whoever, we'll have a, like a rulework criteria, and then from there, whoever has the highest points, let's just say, for example, then we'll, we'll present that award that to our company.
It's a great idea, and I don't want, again, and we just need to make sure there's an award that we have designated, who's gonna provide maintenance? Or who's gonna take care of this, because it'll be, it'll be city asset, but are we really qualified to to do the upkeep, to do maintenance, and so, so anyway, this, this is all.
They said how can you use images or contract?
Dr. Marquise, it's on me. One of the things that I can notice from that is that it goes through a lot of lines of business go through there, the hospital also would be able to benefit from it. And I know that a lot of companies will use technology like a Steve Wayne and different things, where they're able to back up and use both their direct broadband as well as their, like, dedicated line versus their shared lines, and it actually creates more dependability inside the systems that you're using, especially like the hospital would definitely benefit from that.
Companies can take it back on whoever wins the contract, they can.
They can.
First service user line, just like how all the same companies use the same cell towers, it's not gonna be just one.
Mr. Mayor members of the commission, I just want to thank Maddox Foundation for this three hundred ninety thousand grant. This, I think this is the big one, this is good, and like I said, this is phase one, and once that's complete, we'll move on to, to phase two. This time I stand by any questions that Mayor Commission may have. At this time, any questions to approve by their finish?
All right. No further questions? Jaylen?
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Truglio? And Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'll just have email card, part of that is the room, they're covering it all. No match.
Commissioner Dandy, it looks like you're the one.
I'm the chosen, sweet. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash one ten, approval of bid of cemetery interim.
Interment?
Interment, what is, services.
We have a motion, the second place, move into the resolution. Jaylen?
Uh, so Shannon's not here, um, we had a bid opening on October fourth at ten AM for interim services for the cemetery. The only one that submitted was DT Ventures, which used to be D and T Backhoe, but now DT Ventures, Mr. Dale is here, if you guys want to hear from him. The prices for the interment aren't in the packet. But we, we actually don't pay the interim fees, the customers or the families actually pay the interim fees, but we, it's a their services. But at this time, we're recommending to award it to DT Ventures LLC.
You didn't want to say it?
Oh, I have to number thirty-five here, I'm gonna say it now.
I just like to see you do it.
Yeah, the dump truck clerk is on here, Cole.
Yeah, I noticed that. Well, that dump truck here, there's a seventy-eight, and a lot of brandage in the cemetery, it's got, it's seventy thousand on it.
Man, they bumper upgrade. This is a year.
Dale, did you, did you work out all the little issues you had out there? Of, of this contract?
I've looked, this is the first time I've put in there's comments, and then they need to be done. There's a bunch of problems, it's just, we didn't get together and work together and keep it together. You know, there's lots of songs, it's gonna start being moved, and you have five, and five B, I mean, they're everywhere, I'm gonna move them, and I have as much as I can, but, you know, I need it. You gotta get on it, as soon as we get a we get the deal from, from the city, they go after us, everybody, and then we just need to get it marked as soon as possible, where we can look and see if, if we've got to move something. You know, I put in a twenty-four hour notice, but typically twenty-four hour notice, they really didn't, didn't enough time. Lots of times that they couldn't direct burial, this you gotta bury, you know, bury burial within twenty-four hours. So they always call me, and I said, you know, we can do it, we can do it, but it's all working out, and we put stipulations in there that we'd like to see. It's nothing, nothing more than we've had before, but this time we have to grow it out. And I mean, I think everybody does a good job out there, we just need to narrow it up a little bit. I can't get in their way, and they can't get in my way, you know? I don't have no problems out there now, I mean, we just need to get it going, I mean, this is, if you all prove this, this will be my, I'll be back here in about three years, and it'll be thirty-eight years of done this, so I'm tired of it. But I mean, it's helping people.
Somebody's gotta do it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem, I just gotta get stuff cleared and moved, and, you know, sometimes there's work to be done in the way, and sometimes there's maybe a ten chair or advisor, I mean, I have, I can do myself, you have the way, and I can do it. And I, and I put that in there that they need it, I'm not a small, none of that. It gets run over, and it's run over. And I do, but sometimes it happens. As far as the stones, I probably move as much as they do, I got one of them. You know, now they got their tractor. Probably not gonna pick up the stone we need to pick up, but I'll hit it if I can. And also that's all I had to say.
So he answered your question, it's a three year, it's a three years.
So, he answered your question, it's a three year, it's a three years.
I didn't know, I just add.
That's all I had to say.
All right, any further questions? David?
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trigio?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Are you gonna, you know, Mayor, commissions? Maybe it's a little bit over, we need to get rid of it, just.
Hang on, yeah, hold on, this is.
I'd make a motion for count cable.
All right, we have a motion, a second, and now, I'm sorry, we interrupted you.
No, that's okay, Mayor, Commissioner said, I think he's turning, you have any questions?
Any, any?
Let's go with twenty-six thousand dollars in this little piece of work.
That is our new taser contract, sir.
I have a question about the, uh, we call, it's double, there's two, to bury, is that for a month, or?
It was for two months.
For two months? I also wanted to ask, uh, in our fund summary, uh, fund two eighteen, the federal COVID, uh, the nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-five cents, what was that?
That was for the.
Waste one?
I was gonna say, it was a, yeah, I'm sure it was water.
I think that it was, I just wanna find out.
Was it nine thousand?
Nine thousand.
There's probably multiple, um, purchase, purchase orders for, um, that side, so we had a couple of, of expenses to use that, that two eighteen, but. There's nine thousand four hundred, okay, just not. Nine thousand seven hundred, has to be sent from.
Nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-two. Is it waste one?
And it's wastewater, rain, cook, and hop, and we will finish these off, the cost of hops will be better.
Just question. Any other questions? Comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Trigio?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, go into closed session for two, section ten dash fifteen dash one, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight subsection HS, eight, sorry, it's a little, regarding the purchase of acquisition lease disposition of real property or water rights, discussion of water rights from.
We're moving into process. Okay, we have a motion, next, second. Moving into process. Okay, and me, I think that, he, well, he just asked from this.
Uh, Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt? Commissioner Trigio? Sorry, Commissioner White?
Yes.
And Mayor.